Tonight, as we meet in what continues to be a problematic world with the COVID still running loose throughout the country, we are ever thankful for the many success stories that we are now hearing in Batavia, who people who have contracted it have been able to successfully overcome it, and we are really appreciative for the number of people who have stepped forward and have given themselves both of the shots to hopefully keep it away from them. Batavia has one of the better records of COVID vaccination and of lower numbers of folks who have contracted the disease, and for that, we are ever thankful. Tonight, as always, we are very, very thankful for the, all the many good efforts and good deeds that are done. Tonight, I've asked Fire Chief Deike if, at the end of the meeting, if he would take a couple of minutes and share with the council his recent experiences, his responding as chief of a caravan, a fire apparatus from northern Illinois that went down to New Orleans and aided in the area after the hurricane disaster that they experienced here in the last couple of weeks, and we are thankful that he was able to return to us unhurt and hopefully a wiser person from what he had seen and understood, and we thank him for his willingness to go forth and do that. Tonight also, we are ever mindful that as a city council, we want to make the very best decisions we can, and we just ask for guidance and vision and understanding as we go about those items. And as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each one of these men and women from our town and from throughout our country who are doing this vital mission. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Knapp, you want to leave us in flag allegiance?
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Rizotto?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
So we have all 14 present and counted for this evening's meeting.
Thirteen.
Fourteen of fourteen of fourteen, right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen of fourteen?
Alderman Miller is absent.
Oh, Alderman Miller, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Okay, item four, a reminder to everyone, if you're going to speak tonight, to please use the microphone, and because we are recording for BATV. And moving to item five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda, do we have any? All right, the next would be presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, are you out there to do this?
Yes, indeed. Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file, the committee of the whole minutes for August 10th, 2021, the historic preservation commission minutes for August 23rd, 2021, the building reports August 2021. Approvals: the September 17th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $933,636.10. The accounts payable check registering in the amount of $4,659,426.70. Approval: cow executive session minutes for June 8th, June 21st, 2021, and June 29th, 2021. Resolution 21-89-R approving a plat of dedication for Massey View north of Board Street. Ordinance 21-37, mending Batavia City Code related to parking regulations, Title III Business License Regulations, and Title X Zoning Code. Resolution 21-90-R authorizing support, participation in the 2021 safe routes to school grant program. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Move by Alderman Chanset, Secretary of State, for the approval of the consent agendas presented, any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Rizotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. All right, item seven, do we have any matters from the public for items not on the agenda?
No one online, your honor.
Not online? Okay. All right, moving to eight, which is certainly a piece of action with kind of a mixed sentiment surrounding it. As you know, I received on Tuesday, September 7th, a communication from Alderman Knapp that reads, "Mayor Shelkey, Shelley and I have enjoyed calling Batavia our home for the last 25 years, but it's time for a new chapter in our lives. We are empty nesters and have been looking to downsize to acquire our surrounding. We have recently purchased a new home in Winnebago County and will be moving at the end of September. As I will no longer be a resident of Batavia, I must resign my position from the city council effective September 30th, 2021. I have enjoyed serving the residents of the Fourth Ward for the past three years and hope that my replacement will do the same. Thank you for all who work to make our community a better place for those who live, work, and visit here. With best regards, Joe Knapp, Alderman, Fourth Ward, City of Batavia." So it's with great regret that I receive this, Alderman Knapp. That being said, I would like to propose that I'm going to read the following proclamation and then ask for the city council's support of it. It reads, "City of Batavia proclamation. Whereas Alderman Joe Knapp has served with dedication, honor, and a strong sense of community goodwill during his tenure as a member of the Batavia City Council representing the citizens of the Fourth Ward in the northeast portion of our city. And whereas Joe Knapp has given of his time and talents far beyond the required attendance that the two legally scheduled meetings of the city council on the first and third Mondays of each month. Alderman Knapp has been a commendable advocate for ensuring that our city has a positive and productive image within all the other 284 cities which comprise the Chicago metropolitan area. And whereas Alderman Knapp has assumed a very active role in advocating for a strong city position on property maintenance and cleaning up efforts involving sites within town that have not been properly cared for. Additionally, he has promoted his viewpoint for a active and vibrant downtown business district that serves as a gathering place for sharing city events and activities and which brings people together to enhance the friendly nature of life in Batavia. Given his family background in public safety service, Alderman Knapp has been a very strong voice of support for quality services provided by the police, fire, and ESDA agencies throughout our town. And whereas Alderman Knapp has earned the admiration and respect of our community at large for his visionary leadership and his commitment towards always attempting to treat each issue and decision with the same sense of careful review and reflection. Now therefore, given the news that Alderman Knapp has tended his resignation as an elected official effective September 30th, 2021, due to his relocation to a new residence within Winnebago County, the members of the city council along with the mayor and the city staff do hereby extend our thanks and appreciation to Joe Knapp for his legacy of good service to the city of Batavia. And I would ask for a motion and second and vote on this by the city council.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Chanset, I guess it was. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Rizotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Very good. Unanimous vote for all those here. Alderman Knapp, I'd like to go over and present to you this. On behalf of citizens of Batavia, thank you for all you've done. Do you want to make any? Next is a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. Alderman Chanset, do you have this?
I do.
Go ahead.
Your honor, our proclamation, whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month, the National Suicide Prevention and Action Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the tenth leading cause of death among adults and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34 in the United States. And whereas more than 48,000 people died by suicide across the United States in 2018 with an average of 132 suicides completed daily. Whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, community members. And whereas the City of Batavia publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, law enforcement. And whereas global organizations like Hope for the Day and our local mental health partner serve on the front lines of a war that many still refuse to discuss as stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. And whereas we encourage all the residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and to recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of our mental health. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jeffrey Day Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of September 21, 2021 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in Batavia, Illinois. Signed, Jeffrey Day Shelkey, Mayor. Your honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Move by Alderman Chanset, Secretary of State, for the approval of the proclamation for National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Rizotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no, no, one absent, right? Okay. All right, moving to 10, which is Main Street, do we have somebody from Main Street here?
Yeah, I'm online.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Hi, well, we finished a block party, that was a Memorial Day weekend, it was really great. Thank you to all the city staff and the police department for helping us with that. We're working on Bat Fest, which will be October 30th downtown and at the Pegbon Center, 10 to 2. Farmer's market's going really well, we're still, you know, it's in peak harvest season, so it's a great time to get out there. And again, we've secured our indoor space at 161st Street. And that's about all I have, any questions?
Any questions of Abby Beck?
That's all.
No, that's you. Any questions? All right, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, moving then to item 11, which is Resolution 21-092-R authorizing endorsing the 2021 Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. Who's got this on the council?
I can take it, your honor.
Go ahead.
The first thing I'd like to do is to read the request from Mayor Kevin Burns regarding the resolution, and it was, "After more than two years of in-person and virtual meetings, brainstorming sessions, and the participation of hundreds of stakeholders who shared in the mission of creating more sustainable, equitable, and resilient communities, on Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, the Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region was publicly unveiled during a virtual launch event. More than 600 people throughout Chicagoland attended the event, representing federal, state, and local agencies, as well as community climate advocates. And now Mayor Burns is asking that we lend our support to the goals and objectives of the Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region by considering passing tonight's resolution. The resolution is a simple recitation of the core goals and objectives of the Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. He humbly asks for us to schedule consideration of the resolution at an upcoming meeting and following the vote, to share with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus a signed copy of the resolution for the purposes of creating true regional cooperation, collaboration, and momentum for this very important endeavor. While this resolution simply expresses support for the goals, the plan articulates strategies for achieving them that are sensible and tailored for municipal action. Many of these strategies will be familiar, as they are rooted in the Greenest Region Compact, the Sustainability Compact that our community has already adopted. To date, 136 communities in our region have adopted the GRC. And just to inform everyone here and then also the public about what the Climate Action Plan is, it's a framework for communities to use to take strategic actions aimed at meeting these future goals, there's a brief nine-minute video that I'd like to show you that was put together by the authors of the Climate Action Plan. Thank you all for being here, thank you, Kevin. Ned and I will go through an overview of the plan and orient you to help you use the plan effectively. Greenhouse gas emissions have been building up in our atmosphere since the start of the industrial revolution. They can persist for decades or even hundreds of years. So while we begin immediately to halt and draw down greenhouse gas emissions through mitigation, we need to adapt to living with the impacts of climate disruption for a long time. Our plan empowers local leaders to manage the avoidable and avoid the unmanageable. Climate action must be rooted in equity with the well-being of people at its center. This plan is based on an understanding of the challenges we face as a region, like sources of greenhouse gas emissions shown in this pie chart, or climate-related hazards Ned will talk about. These same challenges affect the whole region, although not necessarily in the same way. The strategies for addressing these regional challenges are tailored to leverage the strengths of municipalities. Municipalities can lead by example, encourage others to take actions, and enact policies that address climate change. The plan proposes local solutions to this global problem. Leveraging this economy of scale, this plan can help municipalities skip ahead to choose meaningful actions appropriate for the community with confidence that they will have regional impact. Our region reduced emissions by 7% between 2010 and 2015. We need to triple or even quadruple this rate of change in order to reach our targets. We need to kick into high gear now. Starting from our most recent greenhouse gas inventory in 2015, we used modeling to calculate emissions reductions for target years 2030, 2040, and 2050. These colored wedges show that emissions must be evaded in every sector of our economy, especially in energy generation, energy used in buildings, and in transportation. With known technologies and available data, we know it is possible to reduce emissions 80% by the year 2050. However, the path to net zero requires innovation and new capacity. Net zero, which means we add no new emissions to the atmosphere, is our goal. Our targets show a path to cutting emissions in half by the year 2030, on our way to reducing emissions 80% by 2050. This is all from our base year of 2005. Our plan includes eight mitigation strategies, excuse me, objectives to reach these targets. Demonstrate leadership to reduce emissions. Decarbonize energy sources. Optimize building energy. Implement clean energy policies. Decarbonize transportation by eliminating internal combustion engines. Reduce vehicle miles traveled. Manage water and waste sustainably. Sustain ecosystems to sequester carbon. To demonstrate how this plan works, I'll focus on the objective, reduce vehicle miles traveled. In plain speak, that means driving less, using transit more and active transportation more. Let's take a look at a sample of the strategies from our plan. Municipalities can enact zoning codes and make transit more accessible to more people and businesses. They can lead by creating safe paths and infrastructure for walking and biking, and they can encourage others to do so as well. Municipalities can encourage walking, biking, and transit use through education, incentives, and collaboration. The plan also rates each strategy for relative cost and effort, and we describe how each strategy can lead to equitable outcomes for vulnerable residents, as well as how that strategy relates to a more resilient future. When we mitigate emissions, new technologies and nature-based solutions also contribute to thriving, resilient communities. Mitigation and adaptation actions are interrelated and interdependent.
To mitigate emissions, we're tracing greenhouse gases from their source all the way to a solution, and that's, so that's one variable. Building resilience and adaptation, we have to understand hazards and the way that climate amplifies them, and we have to understand how hazards affect people, places, and things that we value. So those are a lot of variables. Consider one example. We all have to get from home to work. If a flood takes out a road or cuts off access to fuel, critical services will be disrupted. One hazard can affect many assets, people, and economic impacts. Building resilience means improving everyday capacity, for example, by accommodating stormwater and designing transportation systems that can function after heavy rains. The resilience portions of this plan emphasize climate smart policy and building back better, creating equitable opportunity and benefits in the process. Using the steps to resilience, we inventory the plethora of things that we care about and the ways that climate can exacerbate a multitude of hazards. We recommend this assessment process be repeated town by town, but to help address high priority impacts, the plan does provide adaptation strategies linked to common ways that flooding, excessive heat, and drought can impact quality of life in the region. The goal of this plan is for each community to persistently, equitably increase resilience to emerging climate-related hazards. That's an iterative, long-term process. Planning for climate change and making the necessary changes to prepare people and protect homes, transportation systems, and utilities requires coordination, as all the speakers today have emphasized at all levels of our society. The adaptation targets in the plan are climate resilience governance by 2030, using the decisions and strategies emphasized in the plan. Our target for 2040 is to build resilience across jurisdictions, leveraging federal and state support. By 2050, the Chicago region could be home to cohesive and resilient communities. Hundreds of regional experts categorize the strategies in this plan, yielding five overarching objectives that are widely accepted in adaptation science and practice. Engage and educate. Incorporate equity and inclusion. Collaborate and build capacity. Enact plans and policies. And adapt operations and investments. For each objective, we highlight municipal strategies linked to the criteria that Edith already described, including roles, lead, encourage, enact, costs, and the anticipated effort required to enact each strategy. Our research and engagements in preparing for this plan focused attention on issues of concern across the region, but each municipality can address its own climate-related risk using the steps to resilience. The heart of this framework is engagement and iteration, denoted by the gears in the center of this schematic representing all the steps. Engaging people at all stages is essential for incorporating equity into building municipal level capacity toward our goal of persistent, equitable adaptation. That challenge of sustained inclusive engagement extends to every level of government. Planning organizations and councils of government can support municipal decisions, we can move to the next slide. State governments can support those regional entities, and the federal apparatus can support state government. When all these levels are aligned, sustained adaptation can be achieved. Climate is a crisis today because it's been so long in coming and people have been so slow to respond. The emissions of today will be magnified as huge problems tomorrow. As Edith has said, we have to kick into high gear now. The purpose of this collaborative regional plan is to accelerate climate action at a scale and speed that no one municipality could do alone. The lineup of speakers here today demonstrates the kind of coordination we need to cultivate. The attendees of this roll-out event are well-positioned to help municipal leaders immediately
Okay, with that, does anybody have any questions about this or want to make any comments?
Yeah, let me start. As most of you know, I'm on the executive board of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and I see Edith McRae all the time, and she has become a very strong voice for this. And one thing I will tell you that I'm very proud of is, is that when I go into Chicago and they start looking around at what everybody's got in the suburban area, the one thing that is a shining light in Batavia is our new wastewater treatment plant. And all the technologies that have been enacted in there, it's now being kind of utilized as a regional model for a number of other cities, and I've had at least two different mayors in the last six weeks call me and ask about, could I arrange for them to get into the sewer plant, to take a look at it, bring their city councils or whatever out? And, you know, that was, we were at the right place at the right time, there was a lot of factors that came in involved there, and the state of Illinois was very generous with a very significant loan that really helped us control the cost of that thing, so that it really didn't have to result in a property tax increase or anything else, we were able to cover most of it with rates, and we're basically paying off the bonds on it, what, 25 or 30 years, so it doesn't, but that's, that's over a $30 million expense sitting down there on South Shumway Avenue.
When all told, it will be $65 million.
When it's all done. But the initial, what we've done already is done a remarkable enhancement of our discharge into the river, and they'd like to get everybody else up to the same standard that Batavia's doing. So I just cite that as one good example of what we're trying to do here. I certainly would encourage the city council tonight to authorize the endorsement of our involvement in the 2021 Action Plan, and, you know, as I said, 136 towns have done it, a lot of them have just started to come on board, there are 284 in total in the Chicagoland area, so we still got to get up to about 172 before we're, or what is it, it's a ways yet to go before we get to halfway point. So I think we're on our way and the movement has started, and we have some folks from the Environmental Commission here, does somebody want to make some comments? If you come up and introduce yourself for us, so.
Hi, everyone, it's nice to be here again. My name is Alex Selis, and I am a member of the Batavia Environmental Commission. Laura, that was a great little clip to show, so I appreciate that, I think it was a great I think it was a great summary of the plan and how it works. So, of course, the Environmental Commission supports this action plan, and we would highly encourage and support the city and council in passing this resolution and bringing it forward. We do believe that in conjunction with the Greenest Region Compact, this plan provides a template for helping municipalities address their impacts on climate change, and we are looking forward to working with city and staff and council to bring the help with these efforts and achieve the goals of the plan. In the coming months, we will be digging into the plan and figuring out, from the commission's viewpoint, what we think the city can do and what we really want to focus on, and kind of a plan to move forward through that. We would encourage everybody here to also read through the plan and come to us with any, I guess, your thoughts, and if you guys have any ideas as well, and work together to just carry this forward and do some good for the community and the region and the world at large. So I don't know if anyone has any questions at all from here.
We thank you and the Environmental Commission for all that you're doing to enhance public awareness and pointing us in the right direction on issues in the future and up to this date. And as I say, I know that, you know, we, at the early days, I would think this is maybe before you were at the Environmental Commission, we, we had some conversations with them about our water treatment plan, and they made some good suggestions, all, I think, all of which were enacted by the city council at the time it was done. So you've got a recognition of knowing what you're talking about and doing good things, and hopefully, together, we can get a lot accomplished. So, thank you for coming down tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
So would anybody care to make a motion? Alderman Beck.
Well, I have a few comments and questions for the council. Obviously, I'm in support of, of passing this resolution to adopt the Climate Action Plan, but I would ask that if, if we do so, that we, we resolve to actually make it an action plan and integrate it into our strategic planning, and in short time, go through the document. And if you haven't yet, to know exactly what it is we're adopting, you know, from page, I'd say 86 on, are all of those, those highlights that Edith showed about, you know, the spreadsheet that shows the breakdown of every action that it's, it's asking or laying out as a potential for municipalities to do, what the cost is, how much effort it is. And we should go through that and, and really identify if it's something that we are willing to get behind. I think, in light of conversations that we had earlier in the spring, adopting this would definitely be turning a new leaf, as you would. And it would be setting a new tone for the city. It would be adopting a new framework for approaching the future of our energy, because, again, this is a climate plan. This is, as you saw in the chart that showed the sources of greenhouse gas emissions, energy, electricity production is the number one. And I don't want to look like a, a bad neighbor or uncooperative if we are signing a resolution that is putting forth these aggressive targets for car, for carbon emission reduction and turn around and, you know, lobby for coal, you know, in a couple of years. If federal mandates come down and want to close Prairie State sooner, you know, it would seem, it would seem contrary to this plan. But there's a lot in this plan that we can do. There's a lot in this plan that we can't do, but there's a lot of things we shouldn't do if we adopt this plan. And I want everybody to be aware of that, because if, if we, if we don't want to do that, then we should, we should table this, have a longer conversation about what's in this, and talk about it more, and not just sign it and never look at it again. So I would obviously, would love to see it passed tonight, but I, again, would say if we, if we integrate it into our strategic plan, we hold ourselves accountable, we hold staff accountable to follow it as well, and bring us their expert expertise in the operations of our city, because this touches every corner of city operations and every single department. And so we need it to be a holistic approach to the way that we operate as a city. And so if we're willing to do that, then I am so excited, and I think we should, and I think we can, and I think we have a great opportunity now. The Climate and Equitable Jobs Act has passed. We have a new leaf. We have a new way forward. We've got timelines. We should run with it, because it's the right thing to do for the health of our community here, the health of our state, the health of the people in Southern Illinois, et cetera. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Your Honor.
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Beck that, you know, we should look to see what we can do to contribute and not to take away from the effort. And I think what I understood in the spring when we were talking about Prairie State was not that anybody was necessarily rallying for coal. We were rallying for a way out of it that did not financially impact the city. So that, that is our big struggle, and I think we need to find a way, especially federally, somebody comes down and says, hey, you've got to eliminate it in the next 10 years. Well, then, again, find us a way out. We're 100% behind it, but we can't, we can't do things that will make our city, put our city in financial ruin. So it is a, it is a balancing act that we need to, we need to figure out. But I am in support of signing on to this.
Anybody else?
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, I would definitely be in support of this. I guess the, the biggest question I have is how do we achieve those things? And I think that's something that, in my mind, well, I get that's what it says, but how do we get the public behind it, the finances for it, and the action plan to actually achieve it? I mean, it's all well and good to say that this is what we want, but if we don't have the wherewithal to get there, then I think we're being kind of disingenuous that we're saying, yeah, we want to do this. And I think that's one of the things, like you said, that we haven't really discussed how we truly get there. So I'm fine if we believe that this is the framework or this is the ideals that we're going to use, and then as we fold that into our budgets, our long-term plans, our strategic planning, and, you know, how we move this forward, I think that's okay. If we're looking at this, or people look at this and they say, this is, wow, Batavia's going to do all of this, that's not reality.
No.
And so I think that that's something that we all have to remind ourselves, is that we should strive to do the things that are here, but I think in some respects, some of this is going to be put upon us by outside sources, whether it be the state or be the federal government. So some of the things that are in here may or may not line up with those directives. So, you know, I just think we have to be flexible with this, because I just don't think we're going to do everything it says.
No.
And on the timeline that it says, too. I mean, some of it, to me, is so technology-based to get there that we don't have the technology for yet.
Well, she commented on that. She showed how much is achievable with existing technology.
Right.
And it's a majority of it.
Right.
And then some of it is going to need innovation. So I don't think we can discount.
Right.
And something that's not in their preview in that grid of the list of all the strategies is that they've also got a column for solution status, and they tell you whether or not this is a proven strategy to do this, if it's aspirational, if it's evolving, if it's contingent, and it tells you what it's contingent on. We've got, we've got a menu to choose from, and I think, like you said, it, it starts with having the intention and having the paradigm to do it, and it starts with a meeting to go through it and set our strategy.
And I mean, I think it's, it's real easy to say, yeah, we could change every vehicle that the city owns over to something that isn't powered by fossil fuel.
And then he's.
But the reality is, we can't do that, and the, the sources of our electrical supply, no matter whether we're in Prairie State or not, are not 100% renewable. So some of the things that I read through in there, to me, I don't know how we get there. I mean, even with what I read that's in there that they say is the technology that they can make it happen, I don't think we can afford to do that. So that's kind of where I feel like we're at now, and yes, this is a good thing, but I think we have to be, you know, reality-based to what our situation is.
Alderman Chanset has his hand up.
Who? Alderman Chanset?
Mm-hmm.
Alderman Chanset?
Well, thank you. So I know that we had, we've seen this framework before, we've seen this plan before at a committee of the whole meeting, and at that time it was presented, we didn't have a ton of questions. We didn't give a tremendous amount of opposition to it, so we all seemed to generally sign on, on, on board with the concept. We all recognized that there would be costs involved, and we knew that we couldn't know exactly what was going to happen in the future, but we, this is definitely something for the committee of the whole to discuss. And Abby, you're absolutely right, it does belong being integrated with the strategic plan. So I would support approving the framework tonight, and then going back to committee to see how, how we can implement it in, in a, in a reasonable fashion. That's all.
Dan, I think you're thinking of the Greenest Region Compact, which is, was signed in 2018, but this plan is brand new, so we haven't, we haven't seen this in Cal. I didn't miss that somehow, did I? No. Okay. This is, this is, this is a brand new follow-up plan to that one, which we should.
But they did point out that many of the items that were action items in the Greener Region Compact are things that could be utilized to check the box in the Climate Action Plan. So sort of the, the GRC gives us a framework of actionable items that we can start implementing as they're practicable. But one of the things that I did today, too, was just tried to kind of take an inventory in my head of all the things that the city of Batavia is already doing. And having something like the Climate Action Plan gives us the vehicle with which to communicate with the general public about the fact that we are more than just part owners of coal energy generating plants, that, for instance, they want to have buildings use less energy. We actually do have a solar array on our Public Works building that is partially where the power for that building comes from. Other leader items that the mayor mentioned, the wastewater treatment plant, not only does it have the state-of-the-art equipment for reducing phosphorus emissions, but also the digester used to have to utilize fuel in order to warm it to the appropriate temperature at certain times per year. Now that digester runs on its own fuel. So gas is created by the digesting process is what the machine captures and uses in order to warm itself up. The state-of-the-art dewatering equipment that we have for the, the sludge from the wastewater treatment plant means that we're putting less waste into landfills, we're putting less waste onto trucks, and so reducing the carbon footprint that way. We also have enacted ordinances that both, that are examples that they use in the Climate Action Plan. One of those is the no idling ordinance that we have, and another one is, in order to encourage people to invest in their own solar energy, we enacted net metering policies that were in favor of those who are doing their own self-generation through solar. Here's a big one, though. One of the things they talk about addressing are flooding problems. And as you know, the city of Batavia has invested $5 million in the two projects, the Ward 1 and Area 3, and now we're looking at making further investments in both the Mahoney Creek area and also in Carriage Crest. So that's investments that we're making to the tune of millions of dollars to address and try to make ourselves more resilient in the face of climate change. And so I look forward to working with our Environmental Commission and with staff and city council to develop a list of further actionable items where we can demonstrate our support, because as, the whole purpose of this is that while, you know, one municipality's actions can't do it all, with concerted action, we will actually see some change. So I appreciate you considering signing on to the, or approving this resolution this evening. Thank you.
I mean, I, I like the resolution from the perspective, I think it gives us long-term goals.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think all this is going to be accomplished in the first five years, 10 years, 20 years, but I mean, I think we know, this gives us a guide which, where we want to go. We set it up for future city councils to understand what was done. I mean, this was a regional thing that was done for the best interest of everybody in the Chicagoland area, so there's no, there's no quickness in any of this, I don't think, but it does set a standard of where we really want to go and gives us a point to aim at that we want to achieve. And I would hope that future city councils would continue to live by it and go with it and do the enhancements we've done. I'm, I'm very proud of our city staff at the Public Works Arena, who all the things they've already done to kind of enhance things over what we have done here so far. I know the others in the other departments are also looking for things that they can do to make things better. So I think we got everybody thinking it, and we got the great Environmental Commission in town now that's, I think, given us advice and counsel as to where we need to go. So nobody can say we've slipped it under the carpet or we're not paying any attention. We are seriously trying to move forward to make this something that future generations will look back on and say, well, they, they had the right focus at that time. So I don't know, do we want to, do we want to pass a motion tonight, or we want to refer to committee for one more time before we vote on it? I don't really.
Your Honor, is it possible to, I'm actually curious about this, to pass this resolution tonight and then also come back to committee?
Mm-hmm.
With the Environmental Commission and come up with another resolution that's specific to our city, or?
If we pass the resolution, it would be my recommendation that we set something up on the schedule to come up with a strategic action plan for this.
Okay.
Or take this and make it its own separate topic within our strategic action plan. So we would definitely be willing to do that.
I mean, I think this sets the stage for that to happen, if we adopt the policy.
Yeah, that'd be the next action.
Right. And I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, given, as I sit here and listen to you discuss things at the committee meeting, this could be a multi-meeting conversation before you get done with it. And there's nothing wrong with that, because there's a lot to be talked about and considered.
124-page documents. So there's a lot.
Yeah. And I think it's something that we're going to have many Cal meetings on over the course of the next 20 years, because I think it's something that we're going to have to keep track of, and we're going to have to keep working on each and every year. And again, it's going to be something that we're going to have to figure out how to get it into our budget, into our plans, so that we continually do it and we hold ourselves accountable to it, because we passed the other one in 2018, and I'd have to really go back to it and look at it and see how much we've achieved of what we said we were going to do in there. So I think you're right, Abby, that that's something we have to do, too, is when we do put this out there and we do start to do things, we do have to keep track of it and live up to it.
So what's our pleasure? What do we want to do, anything right now?
I'd say we pass it. I will move we pass the resolution to adopt the Climate Action Plan. Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, Alderman Beck, second. Alderman Lehman for the approval of the 2021 Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region, the city's endorsement. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll. But wait a minute, before, let me let the record reflect that Alderman Miller has joined the meeting. Now I'll call the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Now.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizado.
Aye.
14, Your Honor.
Hey, that's a resounding endorsement, so.
Let's see.
Let us move forward, and I'm sure there will be many more meetings of discussion on the various aspects of it as we go forth, but we've set the stage and put it under the record, so.
All right.
Congratulations to all of you and the Environmental Commission, and thanks for your good efforts to helping spearhead this thing, so. All right, moving then to 12, the administrators' report.
Yes. On Wednesday, September 15th, we had our first virtual community engagement open house with Hitchcock Design Group. The purpose of the open house was to offer an opportunity for the Batavia community to get involved in selecting a dam removal process and review how each concept will affect the depot pond. The second community engagement open house. The second community engagement open house will be at the Peg Bon Center on Saturday, September 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10, from 9:00 to 10:30 a.m., or as long as people are there to ask questions. We want to encourage everyone to please take the dam/depo pond preference survey, and that will be open until October 1st. And you can find a link to that on our Facebook page, on our website, on the Hitchcock Project website, and on the Park District's website and Facebook page as well. So we've also amended the sign that's out there by the fountain and put a sticker on it with QR code for getting right to be able to take the survey. We met with Shodin and their architectural team last week for about three hours and to go over any questions that they had about our building codes and various other issues like fire safety, where we're placing storage rooms in the public parking garage, and questions about our utilities. We're making sure that they have all those questions answered so that once they are submitting their plans for building permit, that that process can go as smoothly as possible. Finance has been very busy. Not only is it the budget season, but this is the first time that they are using a new budget software. And as with any new software, there are always some, some difficulties that that presents, but we're working through all of those issues. And we expect that the public-facing side of that software will be ready within the next couple of weeks. There is also a job opening in the utility billing department. We had an employee leave for another position, and so we'll be posting that very soon. In community and economic development, the Plan Commission had a meeting last Wednesday where they approved the revised landscape screening for the Avenue Marketplace development and also recommended approval of the conditional use for Sturdy Shelter Brewing, which will be located at 10 South Shamway Avenue. They also conducted a public hearing for the Winding Creek Development by Polty Homes off McKee Street. Revised plans for the Avenue Marketplace and the Spec Industrial Building at 1459 Louis Bork were submitted in our understaff review. And the September 28th Cal meeting will have the above-mentioned Sturdy Shelter Conditional Use Annexation of Properties on Main Street and the vacation of a part of North Harrison Street on the agenda for consideration. The Spec Industrial Building at 1252 Pearson is nearing completion and will have final inspections scheduled soon. And Bar 1 continues with their building expansion project, which is also on Pearson Drive. In Public Works, the city's parking lot reconstruction project is underway with work occurring at the North City Hall parking lot and also the East Side Fire Station. Where the punch list work associated with the Main Street reconstruction project is going to be continuing for the next several weeks. Final paving is going on in the Ward 1 Sewer Project, and then that project will move to punch list items. And it's expected that the new Paramount Substation will be energized and placed into operations by the end of this month. And Public Works and Community Development have been working cooperatively to supply data in support of the next phase of the wastewater treatment facility plan update. In the Police Department, the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners accepted the test results for secondary register of certified eligible police candidates at their September meeting last week. 22 applicants passed the examination. And finally, the final eligibility list will be established at the October meeting of the BFPC. And that list will assist the department in filling future vacancies. They interviewed 10 individuals currently members of the Batavia Police Department for the Police Sergeant Eligibility Examination, and all have qualified to move on to the final phase of the examination, which is the Assessment Center. And the final eligibility list is on track to be established by the time the current list expires. We have a Batavia Police Department officer who is currently attending police bicycle operations training. It's a 40-hour course, and so we hope to have the department on track to reestablish a periodic bicycle patrol detail during summer of 2022. And just to let everybody know that the Batavia High School Homecoming Parade is going to have a different route this year. It's on Wednesday, September 22nd, beginning at 5:00 p.m. It's, the parade will begin at the Wilson Street entrance to the high school and proceed east of Lincoln Street, turning south on Lincoln to Main Street, and finally returning west on Main Street to the Main Street entrance to Batavia High School. The event should take approximately 45 minutes to complete, and Batavia Police Department and Street Department personnel will be on hand to assist with traffic management during the event. And wanted to thank Chief Dyke for leading the contingent of Illinois personnel and equipment that was sent down to Louisiana. As mayor said, he would like Chief Dyke, if he has...
Chief Dyke, can you come up for a moment and just share a couple tidbits about your recent two-week assignment down in New Orleans after the hurricane?
It was down in Louisiana, and we were on southeast, southwest, and northwest of New Orleans. We weren't actually in New Orleans itself, but we did cover an area. We were all the way down in Venice, New Orleans, or Venice, Louisiana, which is the further, the furthest you can go south in Louisiana, and all the way up to Albany, which is northwest of New Orleans. And that's about 160 miles. And then we were in Thibodeau, and then we went all the way northeast, all the way to the border of New Orleans, which is about 60 miles. So I told, I had fire engines over maybe about an 8,000-square-mile area over there. This was a FEMA-funded request. They, they go down, FEMA goes to these disaster areas, they find out what they need down there, and then they put it out to the mutual aid organizations and to the states to bid on it. And Illinois won the bid on it. And so we sent 15 fire engines down there and two commanders. That was one of the commanders. So we sent engines from Elburn, South Elgin, Aurora, Westmont, Addison, Eastside, Marcell's, Marion, Jefferson, O'Fallon, Bedford Park, Halos, Highland, Evergreen Park, and Heron. So I think, as the mayor might, will probably know, those, those are not just up in the northern part. Heron is all the way down at the very tip of southern Illinois. So I had 15 engines from all over Illinois that we brought down there. The, when we got down there, we, our base camp was at Nichols State University, and we got down there about 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And we stayed in yurts out there. The command staff stayed there the whole time in their yurt. And then the next day, the all 15 companies were sent out to the various fire departments in that area. The, the biggest problem down there was, it wasn't flooding like it was for Hurricane Katrina. It was really the wind that created the problem down there. Some of them stated that their fire stations clocked the wind at over, at around 200 miles an hour down there. And so the, what you had was a lot of telephone poles snapped in half. You had a lot of trees snapped in half. I would say 95% of the roofs were damaged down there. Almost every single roof that I saw had damage to it. They were still, while we were down there, they were still without electricity for about 50% of the population, and about 10% of the population still didn't have running water. We, so we covered, like I said, a large area for me to go down and visit and to check on the troops. It sometimes took me two hours just to go, to go travel down there and check on them, kind of a thing. The residents there were very happy to have us. They were very thankful. What we would do is we would stay in their fire, the fire companies would stay in their fire stations and handle their calls. Most, a lot of the fire departments are volunteer over there and down there, and they just don't have the manpower to handle the call volume that was coming in. They don't have the manpower because people are taking care of their home personal things and stuff like that. So we sat in there and we took their calls for them, and we also did humanitarian things such as handed out water, food, tarps for the roofs and things like that. We had a couple incidents. We had one person hospitalized for heat exhaustion. We had to send one person back with COVID. And yes, last night, I'm going through Memphis, Bedford Park lost its drive shaft. So that, it always adds, adds something to the, to the whole mix there a little bit. I've been on the, our mutual aid for the state, I've been on the Command and Control Committee for about 10 years, and this was a nice opportunity for me to go out there and to hone my skills, to be a commander out there. And it's interesting because we don't know any of the people. 15 engines, they're all from all, all parts of the state that never met any of them before, never met any of their lieutenants, never met any of the other command staff, but we all worked together very nicely, and it all turned out well.
Well, thank you on behalf of the community for going and so well representing us.
Thank you.
Okay, going then to committee reports, city services.
Yeah. I don't think we have anything on the agenda. We do have something, we're going to discuss the entry of ways science tomorrow.
Yes.
So that's on the agenda.
Government services, Alderman Chansett.
No report, your honor.
Public utilities.
Nothing to report, your honor.
Community development.
No report, your honor. Just a reminder to the public, because I've noticed a lot of signs lately out for various, varied amounts of things. Make sure that they're behind the sidewalks on your own property, not out in the parkway, not stapled on a telephone pole or an electric pole or anything else. Just keep them in your own yard, and then they'll stay there. That's the only thing I have. Thank you.
We have other business from the council? All right, under the mayor's report, very quickly, we found out today, I guess, that the Sam's Club is going to remain kind of a vaccine center. And I guess they're going to go into this new backup vaccine, or whatever we want to call it, it's going to be. They're also going to be, apparently, they're going to, they've got their whole building out through March, is that what I understand?
She said initially, just through the end of the year, but given the, what recommendations they're coming out with for boosters and then also for younger-aged children, she expects that it'll be continued beyond that.
So as the city council is aware of, when this whole thing started, we agreed to provide the electricity for that building. And that was much to the great appreciation of the Kane County Board Chairman. She called me Friday and expressed to me that, what was going to happen here. And I told her that, she said she had a big building out there, and I told her, well, we've got a couple of things coming up that we maybe could ask for use, use of some of the space. And one of them is our annual Christmas toy drive that the access committee under Roy and Jeannie Bailey and the Dubises do. And so I think we're going to have, be able to have the toy drive out there again this year, which will be a good thing. And then United Way has started a program where they give away a Christmas dinner, all the makings of a Christmas dinner to people a couple of days before Christmas. And they need a distribution point, so I think we're going to be able to put them in there to provide that. And so it looks like we're going to put the building to good use, and you'll probably, you go by there now, you don't see a lot of cars, but I would suggest that the cars will be returning as some of this stuff begins to unfold itself. And this vaccine thing doesn't ever seem to go away. Every time you turn around, there's a new variation or a new idea or a new invention or a new serum or whatever. So I think that's going to be there for a while, and Batavia will remain the home of it. I've had several people tell me they like it out there because it was very easy for them to go and get their shots at. And it's, it's kind of centrally located because we've got pace buses running around to some of the senior citizen homes and that and picking up groups of people and bringing them over there to get shots. And they say, you know, the location in the county, it's kind of central to the rest of the county, so it's working that way. So there's a lot to be said there. Another thing I just wanted to comment on, to our friends at Batavia Main Street under Beth Walker, we continuously, I get a lot of comments and other calls from other city officials wanting to know this farmer's market thing that we're doing in Batavia on Saturday morning. This really has become a starship for a lot of people in the region who drive some distances to come here. And I was talking to some folks that are there every Saturday, and from where they told me they live, they're going to be new neighbors of Mr. Knop here because they're from out Boone County, almost into Winnebago County, they told me. And they're, they got a big farm up north of 20, and they're raising all kinds of stuff they bring to Batavia every week to sell. So that, these folks are coming from some great distances in some instances. I've had two mayors call me and say, can I meet them there some Saturday morning and walk them through so they can get an idea of what it is we're doing here? Because people from their towns go and say, gee, Batavia looks like it's figured out something that, you know, if I'm in the south suburbs, we don't have that much. Why don't we do one of these in our town? So we got people coming in there trying to copy us a little bit, which I guess we should take as a compliment. So we really do have a lot of things that I think we should be very proud of. We certainly, I think, are a community that tries to work to the situation that's befriending us, and I think to a large degree, we do succeed in that. So tonight's meeting, I think, was a good, good example of that, where we're talking about some things that may take a number of years to accomplish, but we hopefully put Batavia on the road to do that. And I know Laura mentioned, we've, the Plan Commission has approved another restaurant for downtown, just down the street here in the old Architectural Studio, the old movie theater, if you're old enough to remember that. I'm probably the only one in the room that does. But Cooper's Building down there is about to be transposed into a.
Brewery.
Brewery with a, with some food, right?
Not sure about the food. They're going to start with brewery. Hopefully, they'll move into food.
And they want a cannibal over the bike trail with.
Yes.
With a patio.
Yeah.
So all, all kinds of new things are coming, and then.
Yeah.
I've had a couple of other restaurant people in here kicking tires, wanting to talk about coming into Batavia. So there's just a lot of, lot of interesting things going on. So all that being said, we do not need an executive session tonight, so I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Move by Alderman Knop, second by Alderman Wolf. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor.
Good night.
Good night, Emma.